First thing I'm going to do is call to order the budget hearing tonight and go over a few points in the budget. Which I do have, give me just something down. Deb gave me a great cheat sheet, she's really very good at that. And it's long because she's very thorough, so I'm not going to go through the whole thing. A couple of things, we have forty-two teachers, twenty-four support staff, six administrators, and approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-one students. Including services for fifty IEP students. We all know we have to be building in the grounds and all that. The overall general fund budget is greater than last year's budget by one-point-six percent. Not including debt service, so I think you did really, really well, shouldn't say we. I had nothing to do with comparing the budget other than obviously the end part of it. Our administration and staff did very well with the budget this year. We still have one unfilled teacher position and one unfilled support staff position. And the only thing that is going to affect the budget that's not in, well, I'm not even going to go there, we'll wait till after. We have the CBA this year, the collective bargaining agreement, and on the Lawrence. Do any of the board have any questions or anything they'd like to include before I open the public hearing? Then I'll open the public hearing. You need to observe. Well, that's easy. Well, good enough.
I guess I have a question.
Sure.
I mean, I assume the school budget is still, you know, approximately three-quarters salaries, teachers, staff.
Exactly, yep.
And, you know, probably one of the most interesting things to look at was kind of class sizes versus teaching, you know, all the way from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. And, you know, it was kind of a nice, nice chart of the past has been used. Is that something that's been forwarded again? Where are we on, on class sizes and balancing teachers versus, you know, students, you know, as we, you know, like everywhere else in the state, continue to struggle getting, getting enough students or the same number of students that we had in the past?
I don't see it changing a lot next year. The anticipated incoming kindergarten size, and it's hard to predict, especially this early in the year. Just what we know around town is fairly small. However, our graduating class this year is also small. The juniors, next year's graduating classes back up to the thirty-ish, which is fairly average for Lynwood. So it's, I don't see that changing much at all, honestly. I think we'll pretty much be status quo again next year.
You know, Judy or anybody, you remember the, the teaching chart that I'm talking about? Like, you know, this teacher in each shift has this number of students or something.
I remember that, I remember.
Is, is that something that can be produced again or just?
Yeah, I mean, the administration continues to look at that as our enrollments have gone down. And what they've tried to do the last, especially the last three or four years, if there was someone leaving from that position, we could fill in other ways. They have tried to do that, so we've probably lost a couple of positions that we weren't, that we did not fill or used other people. We have multi, trying to get multi-certified staff where we can, you know, where we can do that. So they continue to look at that, continue, you know, again, it's a tough problem in the town. You know, our biggest problem is dropping enrollment, but that's affecting, it's due to the housing that's affecting everything in town. It's trying to, you know.
Well, I was very encouraged, you know, in the past, what I heard about trying to have teachers that could fill more roles too. So I know that was sort of the, kind of one of the plans, and I just, I didn't really look last year. So I was kind of, kind of wanted to see where we are, you know.
Yeah, we're continuing to work on that as far as the certifications for teachers, having multi-certs. Especially in the middle school and high school, because they can only teach one subject, the, the subject that they're certified in, and one other. So they are all, they're all continued to, to get another certification just in case they had to teach more than one subject area. And also, we are aware of the, the small kindergarten coming in. And so we will be going down to one kindergarten class next year as it looks right now. However, that, that staff member is, will be placed in another area that we, we have an opening. You know, so we're not hiring any new staff to fill those positions.
Nancy?
Did you say, what was the total for the students? I was ruffling through my.
Two-fifty-one.
That's what I thought, okay. And then that's K through twelve, you know how many high schools, I mean, as of this year? Is it like?
I think it's seventy, seventy-six.
Okay.
Anyone else? Then I'll close the public hearing. Are you going to go through the other warrant articles? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun. Reopen. I'm thinking, wow, that was correctly done. Say that again.
You want to do Article Six, because Article Five was the budget itself, and I even went to the individual articles.
The individual articles. Do you want to do them as we recommend or not recommend? Do it all at the same time? The, the board has to either recommend or not recommend each one article. So after we've gone through them and got, would you want to do, do we do it at the end or now? We've gone through the budget.
Yeah, usually we'll go through all the warrant articles and then make your final vote.
In our meeting?
Uh, in this.
Before this meeting closes, before you go into.
Yeah, before we close the public hearing, yeah. Okay, Article Six is the, the CBA, you want me to read it?
Um, well, you could explain.
The collective bargaining agreement for the support staff. Did you want to speak to that?
Does? Sure.
Great.
So this year, negotiations with support staff instead of regular staff salary. Just some highlights for that, and anybody can ask specific questions if you have them. The salary change year one is a five-dollar increase per hour, year two is a dollar-fifty increase per hour. The insurance buyout changed. So adding a two-thousand-dollar insurance buyout with proof of, proof of other insurance. The holidays year-round, employees' holidays increased from twelve to thirteen days, adding Juneteenth. School year employees with five or more years' service will receive eight holidays. The impact to the total proposed budget is one-point-seven percent.
Any questions?
I think that's pretty much the gist of it. And it was a great negotiation experience as usual. It's always goes very well.
Any questions on the public?
When you said one-point-seventy percent, is that of the total budget or of that portion?
Of the total budget.
Go ahead, Nancy.
How many staff does this include? Because I know at the board, I have.
I think that was in the other.
Twenty-four support staff. Not twenty-four in the union though. There's not twenty-four in the union, that's right.
Is it like fifteen?
No, it's about twenty. Yeah, there's only four that were. And just in perspective, you say a five-dollar increase, it sounds huge. The starting pay was thirteen-fifty.
I know.
So a five-dollar increase is not huge. Right. So when you, it's, they kind of got caught, the support staff, it's every other year. And they kind of got caught right before wages started to increase to a living, what's now, getting a living wage. So they kind of got caught in that. So they're, we're playing catch-up with them now, so, yeah. It needed to happen. Needed to happen. Any other questions? Great, so we'll move on to, that was Article Six. Article Seven is, we'll skip that one. Article Six is the sixty thousand dollars of the Special Education Reserve Fund. And this is what we anticipate will receive from the state's special education aid. So we just put that into the capital reserve, so it can be spent and then it's a reimbursement. Right, so they're based on money that we spend this year, with the reimbursement from the state. But the only way we can put the money back into our special ed trust fund is to do it here this warrant article. But it comes in next year. So if we didn't put it in here, it would just roll in the general service. We want it to go back into the trust fund. Any questions?
Yeah, I think, I think I remember you saying last year we had two full-time students that were off-campus or I don't know what the.
Out of district places? How many out of district places do we have? One, just one, just one.
It's just one?
Yeah.
I mean, it does look like the special ed budget is lower than maybe it was two or three years ago, so I don't know if that's part of it or.
Definitely could. And we've been utilizing this fund, because again, when the, when we had some higher than expected costs, we were kind of caught. So what we've tried to do is budget for what we know that cost is going to be, knowing that we can get some monies back into the trust fund and use that trust fund to kind of level out our budget.
A couple of years ago, we were anticipating an increase, so we boosted the trust fund in advance.
Now we're kind of leveling that, right, leveled our budget.
If it's back down to one, then we almost get a free year, I guess we're bringing the trust fund back down.
Yes and no. It's, the, the monies that are in there are, it's, it's just in case. Now, we get that one student came in and pretty much cleaned out our, our special education fund, cleaned it out. So we've built it back up. Now we're funding special education in our regular budget. We have this money in the trust fund. If we get another student, a special education student with some severe needs, that's going to zero that out again, no question. So we don't continue to put money in there every year, other than this roughly sixty thousand that we'll spend out of it because we get reimbursed.
Right.
And that's what we put in every year. Now, if we get another student with some really heavy-duty needs and we zero that out, we're going to need to put a whole lot more in the next year. Right now, we don't need to.
So we're trying to keep.
Right. Try to keep it level, but it's hard to predict if we're going to get.
Well, the, I mean, the program you had in the elementary school, you had for a decade now.
Yeah.
Whatever, I know that has saved a lot because.
Agreed.
A lot of kids out there, they've just been handled.
Right. Right. Good. Any other questions? All right, let's move on to. Article Nine is to put sixty thousand dollars in the school facilities expendable trust fund. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? It's a pretty standard, we do it every year.
I was going to say that, it's just.
State, what do you have from State Two? Is it sixty thousand? I didn't know.
No, this is from any monies that we have left over this year.
Yeah, any of the unexpendable fund balance.
And is there anything for the facilities that you're expecting, or is this just your typical?
This is what we do yearly, dental maintenance and.
Right.
We have about ninety-five thousand dollars in that fund, and this year we've already spent about a hundred thousand in that fund for different projects. So, yeah, it's just trying to keep money in there.
My news is almost something.
Article Ten is thirty thousand, the school technology expendable trust fund. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Article Eleven is ten thousand in the school equipment expendable trust fund. Any questions on the board? Any questions from the audience?
What's, you mean?
The school equipment expendable trust. Uh, no, we differentiate the two. So like last year, or and this year, last, this year we upgraded, did some Wi-Fi upgrades in the elementary school, it was twenty-seven thousand dollars, so that came out of technology.
Yeah.
Last year we did about thirty-one thousand Wi-Fi upgrades at the middle high school, coming out of technology. Last year we did some fitness room equipment that came out of the equipment trust fund. And we did some intercom replacement up here at the elementary school, so that came out of equipment. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, so we do, we've tried.
Are you done with the COVID, you know, like, was that some of the things, or that was the?
The COVID break, yeah, so that one, we used, pretty much used up all that one, just finishing off the project from the high school, the age-back project. Yeah, yeah. That helped out a lot. Yes, absolutely. Any other questions? Maybe we go back through them individually? And we have.
Yeah, because once you close the hearing, then you guys will take some.
Then we'll vote. Before I close the hearing, any other questions from the audience? Anything else? Okay. Sorry. Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Casey. All favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? So now Article, well, one, two, and three, we don't need to vote on. Article Four, should we, we don't need to.
Why you mention it just because we did.
Article Four is to see if the district will set the salaries of the school board at one thousand dollars. The vice chair at one thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, the chairperson one thousand five-hundred dollars. Moderator at two-hundred dollars per meeting, school district clerk at two-fifty per meeting. Ballot clerks, a hundred-and-sixty dollars per meeting, supervising checklist, a hundred-and-eighty per meeting, and the school district treasurer at four thousand five-hundred per year. The money for this article is included in Article Five.
So we, I just wanted to point out, we had discussion on whether to keep that on, because some districts don't have it as a warrant article, because it's included in the budget.
Yeah, and some.
But we like to have it on just so it's transparent what folks are, you know, being paid, there's no question. And also, I think that we increased the price, the payment for the moderator and the district clerk and the, and the clerks. Right, because it was low before, we didn't quite realize how low we were.
And we looked at what the towns were.
We increased that.
We looked at what the towns were paying, yeah. So we were, our moderator was getting ninety dollars a meeting, I think the towns were paying two-hundred. Yeah, so, you know.
So it's pretty much donating his time.
Yeah, and, and the ballot books were eighty dollars, and the supervising checklist were ninety dollars. So again, we went to the towns, what are you paying, it's too very low. And I know most of you like the ball money town, but. Do you want us to vote to approve, to recommend this article or not?
I mean, you can, it is included in Article Five, I mean, there is.
I will entertain a motion for the board to recommend this article.
So moved.
Thank you, Jasmine. Thank you, Joe. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Excellent. Article Five, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the school board's recommended amount of nine million three-hundred thirty-five thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars for the support of schools, for the salaries of the school district officials, employees, and agents, and for the payment of statutory obligations of the district, and to authorize the application against said appropriations and sums as are estimated to be received from state aid together with other income. The school board is certified to the selectment of each of the towns of Lincoln and Woodstock, respectively, the ballots to be raised by taxes by the towns of Lincoln and Woodstock in accordance with the formula adopted by the Lincoln-Woodstock Cooperative School District. And the school board further to certify to the selectment of each of the towns of Lincoln and Woodstock, the amount to be raised by taxation by each of said two towns. This article does not include appropriations, contain a special or individual articles addressed separately. The majority vote is required. I'll entertain a motion for the school board to recommend this article.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor, so aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? I'm going to go through all of them, so relax. Article Six, to see if the district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Lincoln-Woodstock Cooperative School Board and the Lynwood Support Staff Association, NEA, New Hampshire, which calls for the following increase in salaries and benefits over those paid in the prior fiscal year. Fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, a hundred-and-forty-one thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-six. Fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six is thirty-eight thousand three-hundred-and-three dollars, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred-and-forty-one thousand four-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. Such sum representing the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits over those that would be paid at current staffing levels. Uh, I will entertain a motion for the school board to recommend this article.
So moved.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Second.
Thank you, Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Article Seven, shall we vote? We don't need to do that, no. Article Eight, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand dollars to be added to the Special Education Capital Reserve Fund created in nineteen ninety-eight, amended in twenty-twenty-one. This sum represents the amount estimated to receive, receive from the state's special education aid from the prior year's expenditures. Uh, the school board recommends this appropriation. Does it, I'll take, entertain a motion for the board to recommend this article.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Second, thank you, Jasmine. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Excellent. Do you, do you all have a copy of the warrant? Do you want me to read the Article Seven, I said, okay.
Yeah.
Then I won't read it. Article Nine, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate sixty percent up to the amount of sixty thousand dollars to be placed in the school facilities expendable trust fund created in nineteen ninety-nine, with said funds to come from the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July one of twenty-twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve this, support this article.
So moved.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Second.
Thank you, Casey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Article Ten, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate thirty percent up to the amount of thirty thousand dollars to be placed in the school technology expendable trust fund created in nineteen ninety-nine, with said funds to come from the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July one. I will entertain a moment to unmotion to support this article. Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Thank you, Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Article Eleven, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate ten percent up to the amount of ten thousand dollars to be placed in the school expendable trust fund created in nineteen ninety-nine, with said funds to come from the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July one, twenty-twenty-four. I will entertain a motion to support this article.
So moved.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Second.
Thank you, Casey. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? And we have a warrant.
Very good.
Debbie, you have the final draft that you need signed by when?
By next week. I, I, I have to go back now and finalize at the Department of Revenue, so I hope to have that done sometime tomorrow, and I'll let you know as soon as I do. Send out an email and you can come in and sign, but I think by next Thursday, I think we said we need to get it, because we have to get it to the, to be posted in any newspaper.
Okay.
We all sign it?
So there'll be the, the warrant, and then the budget for MS twenty-six that comes out. That has to be signed. And devil's letter, expect notice of Deb's, shall need some signatures. Anything else for the public hearing?
No, all such.
Then I will make a, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, thank you, Joe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained? And now I will open the regular school board meeting at, I don't know what time it is.
Six fifty-seven.
Six fifty-seven, thank you. You know. Nice try. I don't know if you heard of, Joe just mumbled motion to adjourn, I'm like, yeah, no.
It's kind of Valentine's Day, Dave.
Oh, that's right.
We've got candy.
Yeah, there you go, you can bring us some candy. All right, we did the budget hearing, we did all that. So educational focus, Jason Robert.
Well, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to, to kind of brief you on the NEAS process, which is the accreditation process for high schools and colleges and educational institutions. It's not a hack-in by any stretch. There are school health there that are not considered accredited, but what it does is it provides an opportunity for self-reflection and meeting some, some standards that are set up by this, this organization. Uh, so you should have in your packets, I'm just kind of up the PowerPoint, that we'll just kind of walk through a little bit. It, it is really an overview, happy to give you the specifics. But just wanted to kind of let you know what we're working on, kind of what the outcomes will look like, as well as some of the process associated and kind of what we've done so far and where we're going next. So, um, the second page, it, it's just kind of the focuses of the NEAS process. It's all growth-oriented, inquiry-based approach. Those conversations are going on throughout the entire process, which in the big picture lasts about ten years. Which is a little overwhelming to think about, but it's really about a self-study, getting input and then, you know, putting together reflections that an outside group will look at, setting some growth goals, and then revisiting those growth goals as we move through that, uh, that ten-year cycle. So you'll hear a little bit tomorrow about that. Um, it's exercised around what we're going to do for students and staff in terms of those learning pieces. It looks at professional development and how we do business there. And then all the little supports that we put into our school to make it the best possible place and environment for students to grow, learn, and excel. Uh, so as we kind of move on here, there are a couple of key components in the process. The first part is the part that we're going on right now, which is a self-reflexic process. So since somewhere in November, today, somewhere along right after Thanksgiving, we've kind of been on this journey as a staff. And what we've done is we've actually formed a steering committee, we've formed a group of writers. Mr. Hagan is one of them, that helps pull kind of all the information together. And there's been several meetings just about how we want this process to look here. Every school does it a little bit differently. You know, we have, I'm going to say the luxury of being able to look at this from a K-12 perspective. A lot of school districts really focus on the high school piece only. Uh, you know, we have a, a setup here that's in need to most districts in New Hampshire. So we, we approach it from that perspective, again, looking at how those students are benefiting from kindergarten all the way up through graduation. So, so our self-reflection piece has involved lots and lots of little meetings where we've actually pulled staff together collaboratively during the day with a mix of elementary, middle, high school, special ed, unified arts, and so on, so that we're having these little mini groups of six, seven people having conversations about evidence. And I'll, I'll talk about that in a little bit. This spring, we have a collaborative conference where all of the evidence, all of the reflections that we pulled together. We have a group, a visiting team that comes in for two days, May, I'd say the ninth, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. They'll have seen all of our self-reflective work prior to, they'll come in, they'll spend two days here, and then kind of pull together what they've noticed, their observations, and thoughts about things that we thought we need to improve on, that we want to set as part of our growth plan, as well as things that they noticed, that they say, you know, you may want to lean in this direction or that direction. Um, so from there, we have that growth plan, and then that begins that two-to-three-year cycle of every year, we're going to do some reflection and then kind of redevelop and re-tweak where those goals are going throughout the process, so that at the end of the whole cycle, which for this piece, you know, really twenty-twenty-six is kind of the big piece here for us, that will kind of end this self-study phase, and then it's just that kind of maintenance phase as we go throughout, up through, I think it's twenty-thirty-six. So, you know, we got some time there. Um, the next page, just kind of to show some costs that are associated with this. Um, so the, this, the spring, for the collaborative conference. Um, so the, this, the spring, uh, for the collaborative conference, um, underneath, I just kind of listed out what, what it entails. So we have ride lodging as part of this process for this team. Um, it's four or five visitors, up to five visitors, some travel, some food, costs about twenty five hundred dollars. The big visit that happens in twenty twenty six, it's a little bit larger, a little bit longer. Uh, it's about ten thousand dollars is what we, I mean, these, these are numbers that it should not exceed based off
Sure.
information. So these are numbers that we say put to be, you know, safe.
Yeah.
Um, just because that will end up going into the budget, you'll see that next fall when we present. Uh, and then there's an employee compensation piece for time, but staff is putting it outside of school hours, outside of contractual time. Um, and that includes the steering committee, the reflection writers, and then any other needs that that kind of go above beyond. So the entire process looking at around eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars to, to make this happen. Uh, next page just kind of outlines the five standards. So the last time that NEAS was done here, um, I think it was officially twenty thirteen, if I'm remembering correctly from the report. Uh, there were a lot of other standards that were in place and what they've done is they've kind of looked at them. And I think COVID was, was part of this process is how do we pare this down? How do we combine some of the, the standards that we had? So these are the five standards that we're focusing on, uh, as part of our accreditation. We have learning culture, which is culture and climate of how we do business here. Um, processes around student learning. What do we have in place to support student growth? Uh, how do we support staff professionally? How do we make sure that we have opportunities to grow? Um, not only in, you know, how we, how we do business as an educator, but how do we support kids with anything that they need? Um, and then learning support, like interventions, um, you know, enrichment opportunities, what do we do there? And then just the resources that we have on site. Uh, you know, like through our tech department, through our library media center, um, et cetera. And how does that all kind of pull together? You know, we have our capital improvement plan, which should be part of that process as well. And just how do we shake our facilities and
Sure.
make it work best for, for what we have. Next page is just a snapshot. So there's probably about twenty-five pages that will be much bigger than this. Uh, and this is, this is kind of the process that our reflective groups have been brainstorming evidence around. So we have the learning standard for learning support. It goes into a little description there. You know, this talks about counseling, health services, library information, technology, et cetera. And then underneath it, there are several different principles that that big standard is broken down into. And then underneath those principles, there are descriptors that really define what, what an effective school, you know, would, would have in place or things to support these standards. So for example, um, the second bullet down just talks about a formal tiered support system to identify uh, for identified and non-identified students. So you know, it doesn't matter who the student is when they walk through the door. Do we have a system in place? Something formal that everyone's familiar with in the building to identify the needs of kids? And move them forward. So that's just an example. So we talked about intervention models. We talked about collaborative time with staff to be able to discuss, discuss students. Uh, we talked about PLCs. We talked about staff meetings. And so what we did as these groups is staff sat in a room and we just brainstormed anything that we had that we could use, say, will support that particular bulk of data. And we came up with doodles of information and we actually started the, the next process today where we're actually identifying where we add on, on a continuum in terms of are we working on it? Are we fully implementing it? You know, is it an area that we need to grow in and so on? So you'll, you'll see that data as we kind of go through that process. Um, already talked a little bit about the steps taken so far. All right, um, and that's the steering committee, writing committee and so on. Um, I'm actually going to a Mokomoro Academy NEAS visit, um, coming up in March.
Nice.
Going to go for two days so that I could see what that process looks like. I, I've seen it before on the board's side of things, but I've never gone and like participated in it. So being able to take that and bring that back to help support our team. And we have other staff that have expressed interest and just haven't been able to find a time.
Sure.
And then moving on, really it's about what comes after, you know, from where we are now. We're, we're, we are pulling this evidence together. Our reflections are going to be, you know, written, reviewed and it's supported by staff. And then what will happen is we'll establish some areas that we want, that we think we should be moving in. Um, and then at the end of it, um, that's when that collaborative visit comes in. So there is a timeline in here looking at the next ten years or so. Um, you know, one of the big things I think that, that's really great about this process and the timing, my opinion couldn't be better. And I know I've shared it at Advent Team, is that this process is ongoing. And it is right around the time that our, the, the last strategic plan, the current strategic plan is going to be ending. So it's really about taking those two things in my opinion and making sure that we can figure out how, we want them to overlap. We don't want this to feel like one more thing. We want it to be something useful. And so by when we take and we look at our strategic plan as we go to develop that next, you know, five-year cycle or so, it's going to be taking what we haven't been looking at in NEAS, what we currently have in the strategic plan and figuring out how it all flows together. So it's one plan that we're working on and it doesn't feel like
Sure.
completely separate entities, which I think it, it can't, it hasn't places.
Mm-hmm.
Time. So, and I don't know, I know Mr. Hagan is part of the writing committee. I don't know if he has anything he wants to add, but we wanted to get the board.
Yeah, I mean, I've been through, this will be my third one of these now, my career and, uh, this is by far the smoothest and cleanest I've ever seen this process. Um, their pared-down thing is infinitely more useful than the, you know, the, the, I mean, the old process turned into, we're going to produce a thousand binders that you're not going to read in a weekend, but we're going to pretend you are and then you check it off.
Yeah, no, it wasn't.
It was, yeah, completely useless. Um, this is much, feels much more purposeful.
Good.
Um, so I'm, I'm very pleased by it because I was, I'll be honest, I was sort of regretting until we got into it and I realized how much better this has become.
Good to know.
But the big difference with, with the NEAS, with, with, their, their whole goal is to not just um, look at issues and reflect on them and then fix them. It's creating systems
Right.
within the large system so that that, that's one thing you can, you can definitely check off your list because if you set the system up
Right.
then no matter who's in the building, who the administrator is, the system's in place and that will continue. What typically happens, if you know, is as the agent administrator leaves, okay, that's done. We don't do that anymore, you know, that.
Right, right, right.
And, um, NEAS does keep you on track with, with developing those systems so that they're in place and there's accountability and, and, and makes it smoother.
That has to, that is very good.
Great. That was a great overview too.
Thank you.
More to comment, but I was supposed to be great.
All right. And on to minutes. Minutes from January twenty-four. All in a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty-four?
That looks good to me. So moved.
Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Um, anyone want me to add? All those in favor approving the minutes of January twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed? Stained? Awesome. And we have non-public meeting minutes from the twenty-fourth. I'll entertain a motion to approve those. So moved. Jasmine, thank you.
Second.
Casey, thank you. Anything to add? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Thank you, Sharon, for the minutes. They're awesome, as always. Any correspondence?
Just with, just with some new packet.
Thank you. Business administrators report.
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, the last NEAS cost us about twenty thousand dollars, just for your reference.
Okay.
Yeah, so we will be seeing something in next year's budget when we get to that. Uh, and just another comment, when, you know, we were talking about some of the trust fund, we, the school board is currently working on a capital improvement plan, which is really just going to formalize our budgeting on our projects with facilities and technology, vehicles and things like that. And it's been very helpful. I mean, the last few years, we've, we've been able to accomplish, you know, doing the HVAC in each school with grant funding and things like that. We, um, we finished the roofing in the schools. We're still working on flooring, but we're, we're to a point that we can go through and, and look at our projects and kind of budget them out and have a plan. So when we get to funding our capital reserves or our trust funds, we have a document that we're saying, okay, this is what we anticipate our projects. I mean, it's been a, it's been a very good process to go through that. The town keeps capital reserves, you know, they have plans. So I think it's definitely helped. It can be a helpful tool.
Absolutely. And we've been working on it and we'll get there.
We're getting there.
It's not as easy.
It's a line. It's a big stretch.
Yeah, it is. It is.
And yeah, and just watch out for the email or text that I sent this week about coming and just signing the warrant in the MS twenty-six.
Great. Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Yes, um, as you can see, Robert Wetherall was not able to attend tonight. He typically does if he can.
Yeah.
If it's possible, just to review the, uh, the budget, the warrant itself. But, um, he did say that he would be able to, um, come up to the meeting on March thirteenth, the next school meeting. And we can go over, well, you know, if he can ask for over any questions he may have, uh, with the board, but we will confirm
Sure.
for the board.
Exactly.
March thirteenth. Um, Primex is going to be conducting a walkthrough of the elementary NPR. Um, now it's this week.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, uh, in regards to the, it's, it's certain concerns that they have with the student. So, um, they'll come in and flip things over and check it out and that'll show what we need to do.
Good.
Um, let's see. The rest we can do according to the, as we go through the, the agenda.
Perfect. Principal's report. Jason?
Sure. Um, a couple of things. I know everyone's well aware now that the, uh, their boys, high school boys ski team state championship, um, this evening. Um, it was, uh, people were hanging on, uh, waiting for those, those that called during our staff meeting actually, and it came just after it. But, um, you know, we only had, uh, you know, four boys on the team and four boys scored well and well enough to combine for the state title. So that was really exciting.
Awesome.
I know many people had a chance to see the, the impromptu parade thrown together by our emergency services.
Love this community. Yeah, I love this community. A quick phone call and there were six fire trucks. Fantastic. I love this community. I do.
For sure. And then, uh, middle school had the Red Parker Challenge today. Um, they finished second overall. The kids were disappointed because it was, what was it, two hundredths of a second?
It was, it was.
It was super, super tight.
It was.
Uh, but, but amazing nonetheless. And they should be proud of their, they did a lot of work. Um, Paula King, if you didn't see it on social media,
I did.
was selected as a finalist for New Hampshire's official educator of the year. There's still a final, King's doing some interviews and things that will be happening next week, um, before they decide. But she was named as a finalist, so just wanted to.
For her. That's great.
She's put a lot of she's put a lot of hard work in over the years, but you know, I mean, if you ask any kid, she goes back to them all a hundred percent of the time. So definitely a, a well-deserved recognition. And so, um, we have a couple of staff, Dory Whedon and Christie Morris, who've embarked on an SCL journey, ESOL journey in terms of getting their certification to be able to support some of our, uh, you know, English as a second language students.
Um, we have several.
We, we have several and, you know, the trend is that, you know, we'll, we'll have more.
Yeah.
So they, they jumped in more than willing, uh, to be able to support them. So that's pretty exciting as well. Um, I did outline a couple of projects that our FBLA leaders, student leaders are working on this, um, you know, this spring in terms of their, their capstone piece that they put together at a state level. Um, so I did outline those there as well. And then I think the only other two things I'll mention is winter carnival planning and is, it was pretty much ready to roll next week. Um, big thank you to Jen Witcher and student council and all the staff for their flexibility around that. I mean, the last thing I just wanted to recognize that the elementary school actually received a one hundred dollar donation to support winter programming um, from Yale Pool, which is actually Megan Gould's mom.
Oh, nice.
She decided to, to make a donation to our school this year to help fund, you know, extra, you know, with the families that, you know, kids that can't do ski lessons or, you know, when we go over, we do a little, little fitness in terms of the kids that stay back from the ski program, ski snowboard program over at Bloom. So she made a donation. So we did send her a letter.
Oh, good.
Thank you for that. So again, as usual, if there's any questions about it, I think feel free to ask and happy to talk more, but.
Yeah. Great. Thank you, Jason. Um, committee reports?
Hey, you have your facilities committee meeting minutes are in the packet from last week and they were reviewed at that meeting. Um, the facilities committee, uh, met prior to the board meeting from the same night.
Mm-hmm.
And the technology committee meeting will be held on February nineteenth, a Monday. And professional development will be held on Tuesday, February twentieth. Um, we will also be needing a transportation committee.
Yeah, we'll get together.
Meeting.
We'll be, we'll figure out the data. We did have a, um, risk management. He has a meeting as well. Did you get the minutes to that?
We had a what? Risk management?
Yeah, we just don't have the minutes.
Oh, yes.
We don't have, we don't have the minutes to those.
Yeah.
I won't go through that. It was, um, from what I remember, um, eventful anyway.
We did walkthroughs of, yeah, middle, high school. So it's just.
Yeah.
Right.
It was nothing major, if I recall, although funny. I, in one of the entrances, we looked in, it looked like one of the radiator heaters was leaking, like really gross. Something gross was coming out of it and we went to find Mark and he went to look, somebody spilled their coffee. The best time to go back, the person that it spilled it was having to clean it up, but I didn't know what it was coming out of the heater. Thank goodness that's all of it.
Now vacation.
No, we won't. Okay. Anything else? Staff nominations, recommend, uh, recommendations and reservations?
Yeah, I just have, I just wanted to give you an update and I put it in this, in this, um, section. Um, as far as a French position, we were not able to fill that French, French position that was wide open since, since the notice. So students will be accessing V-Labs.
Okay.
So what we have done is we've taken the students and broken them up into the, you know, the French one, French two and, and French three. And we have, um, teachers who will be taking on their, um, guidance, guidance through that program. So it's not going to be, okay, it's not going to be like a typical V-Labs. Okay, you're on your own. Do your V-Labs.
Sure.
These, uh, teachers, specific teachers will be guiding the, um, you know, the students, so that they can actually have that, that hands-on from a rail truck and guide them to get through. A little bit different than that. So what, the other, uh, program that was a little bit impacted was your, your world language program for middle school. You have a seventh grade and an eighth grade. Seventh grade have their, have their world language. But the eighth grade will not be able to have their world language this year. So, but they did have it last year. So they did get, you know, a piece of the world language just so they can get that, you know, um, information.
Sure.
They can have something to go by and make, to help make that decision.
Sure.
Freshen you. So that was okay. Uh, the only other thing I just wanted to, uh, let the board know, as I've discussed with you, um, that I will be retiring as of June thirtieth of this year.
Lucky.
Do we have to make a motion?
Uh, no, I, only because, um, you don't need to vote on it.
We just need to acknowledge it.
I would need to formally. Yeah, because my contract is done.
Yeah.
That's the June thirtieth and it's, you know, perfect timing for the retirement.
How, so I've been on the board for seven years and you've been here that whole time?
Thirteen years.
Thirteen years. Well, wow. I really appreciate your guidance and support while you've been here.
Thank you.
Liked working with you a lot, learned a lot.
It's definitely bittersweet, I'll tell you.
I bet.
Hard decision.
Yeah, I bet.
And are you going to a warmer climate in the winters now?
No, as a matter of fact, I will be working, uh, uh, in, within the state, three days a week, working with an agency that goes into the schools and teaches, teaches teachers while they're
Oh, fantastic.
classrooms rather than having them take the course.
Hmm.
And so I'll be the one coming into the classroom and helping.
Oh, good for you. Oh, that sounds like, that sounds interesting, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't not do anything. Don't, don't just go relax.
Don't go to a beach somewhere.
I don't stop that until September though.
Oh, wow.
You get a summer off for the first time in a long time.
Good for you. Good for you. Well, thank you for your thirteen years.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Yeah. Very enjoyable. You have a remarkable community.
Yes. Yeah, I agree.
Very remarkable.
Mm-hmm. Uh, all right, new business, set the transportation committee date. Let's do that after the meeting. Focus to it with Judith and. get it done. People give you the holiday dates.
Yeah, we'll get it. No, we'll figure out when to do that.
Continuing business, strategic plan? Anything new there?
Nothing new on that.
Budget we've found over. Doing it in there. Recognition, we don't have a student tonight, but we do have staff.
All right.
Welcome.
So actually speaking of the student who is very often sitting here, Dalton is headed to, I'm trying to remember.
Silver.
Yeah, it's effectively like kind of greater region.
Yeah.
Podra Out Loud with a strong chance of getting to the state. He's one hell of an order. He's, he's a lot of fun to watch.
Yeah. He's also the only finalist for the Rotary Speech Competition.
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah. Which is fantastic. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it's been kind of fun to watch him grow into this speaking not him a couple of years ago.
Right.
So it's
Very out of his comfort zone. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Winter carnival, looking like it's going to be fun, depending on
Hopefully we get that done.
Snow might be nice. So we're not doing bud sculptures.
Right.
But, and then just again, administration, staff, anybody who's anybody has been going left, right and center to cover all the holes because of course we had to do NEAS groups. And so people had to be out of class for that. And then just the plague is running around like crazy. So and it's just, this is just my observation, but everybody who works in the building has been covering stuff.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's good to hear. That's good to hear. Because you're right, it's been so plague.
Some concurrently.
Yes, exactly. Yes.
Tammy, before you end the meeting, I just wanted to remind the board again, your next school board meeting is March thirteenth. That's the last meeting of this board.
Yep.
And then your school district meeting is on March nineteenth.
The following Tuesday.
Following Tuesday.
Fantastic. You all have to get invitations to that.
Yeah, right. We'll get all that.
And you don't need a form of the president during votes. All right, community. Anyone? Butt John Hamm, do you have any? Nope. Did you have something? Seriously, say no.
Nothing to say anything? No?
No, thank you. I know we wanted to, but that's okay. Uh, we've been on public, so we have nothing else. We're good. Did everybody sign the manifest? Yeah? Yes. No? Thank you, Joe.
Second.
Same, Jasmine. Enjoy your dinner, Joe. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Staying?